So, good morning. I wanted to have this time with you on the heels of this rite of passage that I went through on the 30th of July, where friends and family members gathered online and also onsite to bear witness to my passage from my eighth decade into my ninth decade, from being an elder to maybe a venerable elder, and also to have the opportunity for us to consider some things as a community. And I wanted to do this particularly today. Tomorrow, I'm online with Father John Deere around issues related to nuclear disarmament. Because as we are aware, at 8:15 in Japanese time, on the 6th of August on 1945, the US dropped a bomb named Little Boy on Hiroshima, on the very center of the city. And as this war in Ukraine ramps up even more intensely, and as the nuclear power plant that I cannot pronounce the name of, occupied by Russians, is a site of great vulnerability, in a way is itself a bomb. I felt that this was a time for us to meet, particularly in relation to my birthday wish, which some of you heard. And that wish was a very simple, I think many of us share that wish. And that is to end war in our time. Now, we know that over the next two to four months, after dropping the bombs on Hiroshima and Nagasaki, that between 90,000 and 146,000 people were killed in Hiroshima, and between 39,000 and 80,000 people in Nagasaki. And roughly half of the deaths in each of those cities occurred the first day. And the bombs that we and others have developed since that time are much greater in their horrible power to bring an end to life. And I'm aware that some claim that these bombs were responsible for ending the war quickly and saving American and Japanese lives. And that's, I feel, an incredibly unfortunate theory that was created, in a way, by governments testify horrific violence against innocent civilians. And others even suggested that it were to be a necessity. And whatever the rationale for the dropping of these weapons of mass destruction on these two Japanese cities, whatever rationale one had, it ushered in a new era that reified this human inclination toward violence that can actually now destroy the entire human race and many species and make our earth uninhabitable. So the bad news that we are so aware of and have become deeply sensitized to in this training is that we're seeing an end, in a certain way, to real freedom. And the assertion of three forms of social control: social control through violence, social control through misinformation, and Alex Jones and all of his ilk, and also social control through charismatic and dangerous leaders. But as we know in this training, there is good news. And you are the good news. You're here today. You and I are dedicated to the transformation of structures of violence into structures of peace. And it only can come about through you, but I want to say actually through us. And it's about actualizing the details of our lives through the lived experience of dignity, of care, of respect, of integrity, of empathy, of courage, and of wisdom, and most importantly, of compassion. So the training for me has been an opportunity for us to learn from really powerful teachers about how we nourish these qualities within us. And that's why we're here today. We're here because we have made a choice to be people who are dedicated to the culture of love and wisdom in a world that is more connected, day after day. And I think about the work of David Graeber, who has made it clear that human beings are creative, incredibly creative, in the social forms that they choose. And that the historical notion of a kind of linear development into increasing hierarchies is not the case. And we have historical evidence for this. And I feel that it is important for us to no longer take for granted the increased social inequalities that seem to be inevitable, but to understand that for not only humans to thrive, but all species to thrive, we need to have actual freedoms, not freedoms just in name only. So I wanted to speak personally as someone who was alive during the dropping of these two horrific weapons of mass destruction. I have come to understand, and this has been underlined again and again in our training, that living by vow reflects our ability to be guided by our deepest values, our capacity to really be conscientious and to connect to who we really are. Not only who I really am, but as we face each being, no matter how complicated that being may be, how toxic that being may be, that you are also facing a Buddha, a Buddha who is wounded. And that living by vow manifests this ability to have moral nerve. And this is what socially engaged Buddhism really focuses on: moral nerve, this commitment to, and this capacity to deal with issues of harm, no matter how egregious, no matter how seemingly insignificant. So I wanted today to say, this is what I have faith in. I have faith in us to do this. I have faith in this practice. I have faith in this view. And just as I wished for an end of war in our time, I want to ask you, what is your wish? And I'm going to ask us as a community to put that into our chat. I'm going to open up the chat. For me, it's in the More World. What is your wish? Imagine that it's your 80th birthday. "Freedom from enmity," says Chris. "The end of our human war on all life on earth," says May. Tracy, "Universal compassion." Jennifer, "Dismantle and transform all systems of oppression." Virginia, "I wish for peace among all beings." Natalie, "Deep compassion for and from all beings." Anne, "Reducing suffering for those that are suffering the most." Michelle, "For all beings to know love and acceptance." Judith, "Abolish nuclear weapons." Dana, Diana, "Stopping environmental destruction." Liz, "Honest reckoning among white people about white supremacy." Stephanie, "For a world of safe water, breathable air for all beings." John, "Healing of our collective and individual trauma." Jack, "A true home for all beings." Pajetsu, "Respect, justice, and peace for every being." "To make the rest of my life really matter," Miranda. Karen, "Wholeness and vibrant health for all beings." Helen, "For a life of compassion in the leadership and in myself." "Be whole and a part of humanity," says Brooke. Itzel, "For loving kindness to show up in large and small ways." And I encourage you to scroll through. I'll stop reading. I'm just going to scroll and look. And Joe, and I'm going to ask you to, of course, save these responses. Beautiful. Yes. Thank you so much. Yeah. So these are aspirations I think all of us share. And I want to say that I've been in a very intense series of interactions through the Mind and Life Institute and Mind and Life Europe in preparation for a meeting in Dharamsala that I'll be moderating part of and participating in. And that meeting is with the Dalai Lama and a group of scientists. And it's a deep exploration of how we actualize the best in ourselves as we meet a hyper-interconnected world. And we're actually still searching for the title of the conference, I have to say. There's so much richness. But one of the contributors is an evolutionary anthropologist named Joe Henrich. And he asks a very important question, and I want to ask that question of us because I think it's really key in our work as socially engaged Buddhists. And that question is, what makes us human? What makes us human? And I'm going to ask us to return to the chat. And I'm going to open again the chat up. And I'd like to invite us to opine from your perspective about what makes us human. And Kelly's saying reciprocity, rematriation, regeneration. Beautiful. Miranda, "The capacity to adapt ourselves to change." Fallibility and forgiveness, the capacity to care. Compassion, care for others. Heartfelt connection, remembering our good hearts, the way we can forgive. Imagination and empathy, and so on. I encourage you to look in the chat. And Nancy says, "The ability to reflect on what makes us human." Monica, "Important, our capacity to be in choice." Beautiful. Jack, "Our ancestors" "To inquire, being vulnerable, tears." "Agency adaptability, memory, and intention." Sandra, "One continuous mistake, tell me." Wonderful. Just going through these. So again, we will save these responses in the chat as we explore this deliberation. You know, I'm a recovering anthropologist and the notion of what makes us human has generally been about language, about maybe a sense of fairness, our capacity for empathy, our ability to use tools, but now we know many creatures actually use tools, and our capacity for reason. And it's all important, all of these qualities. But I'm going to just take a breath. I'm curious, Frank, I know you're online with us right now because this question is so important because it is, it underlies what it means to live in a world where the view opens up our sensibility toward interconnectedness. So Frank, I'd love for you to share your perspective on what makes us human.
Well, you know, I love what someone mentioned about vulnerability. I think it's among the most wonderful of human qualities. You know, it allows us really to allow the beauty and horror of the world to impress itself on our on our consciousness, on our souls, on our hearts. And so I think this is a particularly beautiful human quality, which is often only regarded as weakness. And I think it takes a great deal of courage. That's the first thing that comes to mind, Roshi. And you know, I'm, I was thinking about what you just said about faith. And I, you know, I'm reflecting on what Joanna has talked about about this, which she calls the Great Turning. You know, that shift away from that military-industrial society and a movement more toward a life-sustaining society. And I have faith in that, actually. She believes it's happening right now, and I have faith in that as well. So the last thing I'll just say is, very pragmatically, being human means being real to me. It means really being real, you know, not turning away from either the beauty or the horror of our lives. Yeah, so that's the first, just a few comments that come to mind.
Oh, Frank, thank you. Thank you so much for that, Frank.
Yeah.
You know, what Joe Henrich, who's this evolutionary anthropologist, suggests is quite interesting. He says, "Being human is the recognition that we are a cultural species." And he goes on to say that more than any other creature, we are dependent on learning from each other. And I think this is, again, for what we have experienced, you know, in this training. It is to understand, learning from each other points to the profound value of community. And, you know, culture includes so many things, including learning skills of communication, learning attitudes, how we learn about our own emotional response to things that are threatening or attracting for us. And it also, powerfully enough, we've come to understand that it is transmitted through generations. You know, it's not like something that just happens in a kind of commercial way that you're going to sell quickly. It is a process that happens through deep time. And we have come, as human beings, literally, to depend on what are called cultural bequests. And this is the thing that I want to say about view here. We have this idea, and in part from the world of social science. And it's the sort of Darwinian misunderstanding that we are naturally violent and selfish creatures. The whole selfish gene world, the survival of the fittest, and so forth. But even Darwin, toward the end of his life, came to this other perspective. He said, "It is not the survival of the fittest, it is the survival of the kindest." And I think this is one of the things that we are trying to rework here in the socially engaged Buddhist training that is so critical for us to actualize. And that is the cultural bequest that we want to make to the future is not a view of violence, but a view that is based on dignity and care. So I'm going to ask, just take a pause here just for some reflection from you. Because our work together is not so much about learning fancy techniques. It is literally about considering what the cultural bequests we are conjuring at this time, what they are and how they will affect the future. So I'd love to hear from a few of you about your view of what we're talking about when we say, you know, we're a human being, and also about the cultural quests that we, in our generation, and there are multiple generations online now, want to leave for our future. So I'd love you to raise your hand and just, because I'd like to hear from, and I know Frank feels the same, and others, Tia gets, just would love to hear from you. What do you want to leave for the future? You know how to raise your hand, you go through reactions, and any reaction will do. And I'm going to ask us to go to Essence. Miranda, and you are unmuted.
Thank you, Roshi. I'm thinking of Ty talking about not being born a human being, but becoming a human being over time. And something in the chat from Judith Lipton about a misunderstanding of evolutionary psychology, fitness meaning reproductive success, that departing from the kind of instinct that I was born with into actually being human, this is what I want to leave behind.
Beautiful. Thank you so much, Miranda. Joyce, unmuted.
Oh, thank you. I think a lot about the fact that we have this capability and as we've tried to comment, we're able to reflect and we're able to work together and be creative. But what immediately came to my mind was when my mom was in a nursing home and she was struggling with some dementia issues and things. And one of the nurses told me one time that she said to her, because she couldn't really remember a lot of the way she did, so she asked the nurse, she said, "Am I kind? Am I nice?" And I think that's what came to my mind immediately was, I want to be kind. And, you know, that's moving into all those other ways as human beings that we're able to do that.
Joyce, thank you so much for that. I think this is one of the keys, our capacity to actualize kindness. Dear Reggie.
Blessings, Roshi. Happy belated birthday. Blessings to all on the call. Welcome to Some Alliteration. I wish for radical candor, compassion, connection, creativity, kindness, and care.
All right, Reggie. Thank you. Zell, Zell.
Hello. Yeah, I just, I think that I'd like to know that the path I leave of memories is of kindness and and marshalling my own reactions to hurt, perceived hurt, and return that with kindness and understanding the struggle that everyone is embroiled in right now.
Beautiful. Thank you, Zell. Hi, Jerry. Let me unmute you. You are, oops, hold on. You are unmuted.
Hi. I'm in England, which is great. I'm back in a place where I spent most of my life before I went to Scotland. And I'm remembering what I used to do down here. And one of the things I learnt most from was working with children who had been disadvantaged. And with children within a psychiatric hospital, we really suffered.
Happy to meet you.
And I learnt so much from that about care and love and tolerance and attempting to understand, attempting to see a point of view from another perspective, all of those things. And I've tried to pass that on to my son. I mean, that is one of, has been one of my major tasks in life. And I'm so pleased now that he's working in the hospital and caring for people. And I think you, you learn so much from that. You learn everything that's really important from that, I think. And it's not just caring for people, it's caring for plants, animals, the planet, everything. But that, that kind of care is absolutely vital now. And it, although it's distressing, and I'm not actually watching the news at the moment because it's, it's too much. But seeing people blown to pieces, seeing places, I was just talking with my wife about the Battle of Stalingrad and how forty thousand people were killed in one day. The Battle of Stalingrad, which I hadn't known. I mean, it's incredible. But this blasting to bits of people, the only way to come through that is to care and to rebuild and to replant and to regrow and to resist. I think that's what I'd like to pass on.
Jerry, it sounds like you are a gardener of the soul. Thank you so much.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Dear Wendy.
Good morning, Roshi. Good morning. Boy, oh, what a beautiful topic. You know, I, I think immediately when, not the survival of the fittest, but the survival of the kindest. I think what, what it really means to be human is to remember that we're made of a more-than-human, non-human world, mineral, animal, vegetable, and to feel that so powerfully. You know, when I think of you and your birthday, nineteen forty-two, that in the basement in, at the University of Chicago, the beginning of the splitting of the atom. And it started in the year you were born. And, you know, and it was clear to Oppenheimer, they needed a more remote place to test. And this is the year you were born, and eighty years of human kindness and commitment to the more-than-human world. So we are made of the more-than-human world. And survivors in Hiroshima are also, stand and tell the story. And the more, the more-than-human survivors stand an algeri tree at the heart of the peace park in Hiroshima, coming back from complete obliteration, coming back to say, "Can't we do better, human beings? Can't we be more kind and connected through kinship?" So I'm really feeling that this morning and thinking of all of us grateful, so much gratitude for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. I love it, the two gardeners, one after another, are speaking just to this very deep issue. What is it to be human? Erica.
Thank you for this opportunity to be with all of you in this, in this space. It's, it's keeping me tender. And keeping me clear with what I want to transmit, which is open-hearted curiosity. And I also thank you, Wendy, for coming back to what it means to be human. I have a dear longtime friend, Wasco man from the Columbia River People here on the Great Columbia River between Washington and Oregon. And he has told me his creation story, and he began with, "We were pitiful. We were pitiful." And when he first told me that story, it, that word was like, "Oh, I don't like that word." And then he went on to talk about the beans that came to help the pitiful people, the roots, the berries, the salmon, the deer. And the whole creation story that he shares is wrapped within our very pitifulness and our complete dependency upon all non-living, non-human and human beings for our very survival. So thank you so much for this. I have goose pimples all over myself this morning.
Erica, thank you. Erica's pointing toward something that I think is so important, and it has to do with humility. And we go back, you know, again and again to the three tenants. To sit with not knowing, to be in this humble place of absolute openness. And as someone said earlier, to actualize this radical curiosity. And to bear witness, to not separate from, but to be one with things just as they are, no matter what they are. Not separate from, no matter who they are, do not separate from. And from not knowing and bearing witness compassionate action. What is it to respond to a world which is so complicated and so fraught? To have the resources within us, the energy, the wisdom, and the sense of activity to respond appropriately. This is why practice is so important. So thank you. Toby.
Happy birthday, Roshi. I think of heart-to-heart connection. That that's what matters the most. And that, I don't have children, but if I can continue to have heart-to-heart connection with everyone that I come in contact with, and, you know, everyone that I serve, then I will feel as though I've done my duty.
Yeah. Toby, thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia.
So I could reiterate what Toby just said, but I would, I would like to act with joy and fierceness and to, to replace cynicism and defeatism of any sort in myself and, and to possibly inspire others and to, to have faith that what I do, what we do matters. And that that itself is the, the power to motivate us and to keep me motivated just every day. Because it's a, it's a, it's a generating experience. And I just would like to keep sharing that.
Thank you so much, Virginia. Pedro.
Hi, that's me. Yeah, my name is Yuri.
Hi, Yuri.
Yeah, yeah, nice to see you too. And happy birthday as well, although every day is one, no?
Yeah.
For me, very simple, just not to leave a mess behind. That's basically it.
Okay, I agree. Oh, boy. Thank you, Yuri. Ellen.
Thank you, Roshi. Can you hear me?
I hear you great.
I am in the United States in New York City, which I'm supposed to be on vacation. And I have to say that I've spent the last three years with my beings and my people by the sea. And I've been in shock since I've been here. And also traveling a bit. And I realize that I'm overwhelmed at how many resources we're consuming. And how it seems to me, it's just so painful to see that so many people are just not getting the message. And I have a lot to sit with, with all of it. It's been shocking. I also spent yesterday with Mutima Imani from The Work That We Connect, the Weaver and Molly Brown, on the de-escalating harmful patterns of white supremacy. And working with Mutima on, she's doing a workshop with Molly Brown on anti-oppression, just working through it, and how important that work is and how much that has given me so much room to grow. But I realize I need all of you and I need my people. I've stayed in touch with my turtle people every night on purpose. And I'm so glad because it's kept me anchored. But I just really in a dilemma and you know, the practices of the work that we connect, going through gratitude and recognizing this pain. And trying to see with new eyes and moving forward is, it's so important to me right now. To try to cope with what I'm seeing in the world. And, you know, I have to say, I'm really grateful I got out of Israel. It's been seven years. I love seeing my family, but it's really teaching me so much about what's going on and what's not going on in the world right now. And that's a challenge for me.
You know, this is so great, Ellen, because you're exactly where you need to be right now. Out of the, you know, seashore and the world of turtles and into the cauldron. It's exactly on these edges, hotspots, the plunge, where we grow. And it is tough as hell. And you have a choice to go in and you get it, you also have a round-trip ticket back to your turtles. But some people don't have that round-trip ticket. And our job is, you know, how do we create the round-trip ticket for those who are subjected to social and political environmental oppression? So yes.
And also how to, how to, you know, we are responsible. There are those of us who are privileged and able and resourced. And somehow we have to become more responsible. And I hate to lecture about this. But somehow I want to help get the word out that those of us who are able can. And, and we need to do more to help those that just are not. There's a very, very, I agree with you. I'm in a cauldron place right now. And this is a tremendous challenge. And I thank you so much, Roshi, for doing this. And send you many, many blessings for your, for your birthday and for being mine and everybody's mentor and teacher. And a soft place to fall.
Thank you. Well, for you, maybe a soft place to fall. For some, I think I'm an old dragon. But anyway, thank you so much. Doratea. Hey, Doratea.
Happy Born Day, belated. Cultural bequest. I would like to help cultivate radical imagination, which can only come from bearing witness, not knowing. And also, of course, from compassionate action. So radical imagination and also I keep coming back to the word joy. And I keep associating it with joys of resistance, but I don't want to, not only resistance, but actually joy of building together. The joy of building together. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't know if any of you have read David Graeber's book, but this, these two pieces that Doratea brings up are really important. And that is the imagination. The imagination to see things differently than how you could say the majority sees. How important it is to have the vision and imagination to see beyond the constraints of our conditioning. So I just, and also the joy. You know, again, I think of Nelson Mandela and Robin Ireland and how, you know, when he came out of that forty, forty-one years of incarceration, or Malala, that the transmission of joy out of the grip of oppression and tragedy. I feel that this is so important, but it has to be genuine. And making it genuine happens through our lived experience of drought.
Hello, everyone. Happy birthday, Roshi.
Thank you. Oh, we lost you, Jeff.
Okay, am I back?
You're back.
Okay, I won't touch anything. But so I am a, I think it's because I'm getting texts, sorry. I'm a drug addict and alcoholic in recovery. And so some of the miracles to being human for me and my spiritual journey have included the capacity for self-awareness through the spiritual practices like meditation. And then to be able to go deeper into self-acceptance and really owning that which I've become self-aware of, which then gives way to the kind of actions that bring about true transformation. So the capacity to transform my own suffering and the suffering of others, because in recovery programs, the power of making amends that comes from that self-awareness and self-acceptance means that I'm not only healed and capable of healing my psychic wounds, but being a source for healing for others, particularly those who I've harmed.
Oh, Jeff, what a powerful, powerful perspective. So thank you for that. Yes. And you are doing that work. So yay. And, you know, it has been beautiful in the past few years to bear witness to a transformation process that you have been through and have carried others through. So I'm so grateful. All right, Chris. Whoops. I don't know, I think Wendy's unmuting, you're unmuting, I'm unmuting. And okay, there you are.
I think there's a conspiracy to silence me. Want to pass along. And I think I'm, I'm thinking of whenever Frank speaks, he moves me so much. And the, the few words that he has said this morning have really touched me. And I'm thinking a lot about vulnerability. And I think I want to push a little bit further on it and, and go from being open to being vulnerable to like deliberate exposure or something, like courageous exposure to things that hurt. Not hiding from things. Knowing that show up even when you can't fix things. And that we have this culture of quick solutions and of working out if you can win before you start playing. Right? But show up. And I think that's something I would like, I would like if I have some sort of, something to pass along, that sort of lesson that it's so easy, it's just so easy not to look when things are hard. And we have a culture that covers up the hard things constantly and gives us so many opportunities and ways to obscure the difficult and distract us from things. And it's kind of, we do it on purpose, we do it accidentally, we do it as a result of systems around us. So I think if I could pass along anything at all, it would be a change in a culture to a culture of not turning away, not turning away.
Thank you, Chris, so much. And I've said this many times. It's this quote from Zen Master Kaisan, which usually confounds others, but look deeply at what he really means. And the line is, "Do not find fault with the present." Do not find fault with the present. And what Kaisan means is to see it, but don't flee it. To see it, but don't flee it. To see it, but don't flee it. And I feel this is what um our beloved Roshi Bernie encouraged us to do, which is to plunge what Ellen is doing, plunging into New York. Uh, Monica, into the hospital system or her family. Um, to plunge deeply uh so that we have the opportunity to actually develop the strength of character that comes about when we are able to sit in the midst of conditions and uphold ourself and then to respond with compassion. And this takes moral nerve. And so much of this training has been focused on how do we cultivate not only moral sensitivity, but also moral nerve. The capacity to stand in principles of love and care. And to respond from that foundation unselfishly. And the ability to drop down into a view of interdependence where we are discover that we're not separate from any being or thing. Mark.
Yeah, Kaisan's quote you shared reminds me of my teacher Barbara Marx Hubbard's uh famous quote, "Our crisis is a birth." And uh, what came up for me in speaking to the cultural bequest is really about hope. But also what's the foundation of the tools and what are we moving toward? You know, for me, uh, part of my cultural request is I want to help society realize our potential to co-create with the creator and evolution itself. And to me, the tool I use there is entrepreneurship. And part of my cultural bequest is really defining a new operating system for entrepreneurship. And when I look at the spectrum of creation, I look as, at God as the greatest entrepreneur in known history. If, that's why we call God the Creator, the God, God, God or gods are entrepreneurs. And really God has aligned entrepreneurship with our fundamental core human nature is why God has been so powerful. And fundamentally, our nature is purpose beyond self. And that is so key to the nature of being human. So for me, I believe part of that also is a radical acceleration of empathy, empathetic leadership and empathetic entrepreneurship, which is part of my mission in society. Then finally, I'd say I want to redefine the entrepreneurial story as a greater hero story in society. Because entrepreneurship is at the growth tip of what we're creating, co-creating with God, co-creating for our full human potential. And I want to redefine the hero story there of entrepreneurs as really some of the great people, the light workers on our planet and really have them live in that, that place of, of glory and their potential.
Hmm, Mark, thank you. Thank you so much. You're touching so many lives. I'm so grateful. Monica.
Happy belated birthday, Roshi, and happy birthday to everybody here. Um, in the sense that we really believe to be the butterflies we want to manifest in every second sometimes or always. So I would like to add to the creative imagination um, that we also have the courage and inspiration to manifest it already. To, to live, to really live this simple life, this simple deeply inspired life. Tishnatan is also speaking of. And I strongly believe in a contemplative life for everybody. So when I'm not here in my human form anymore, then I really hope that people have seen that this is possible in modern life to create spaces for silence, for our true voices, for overcoming passivity, for starting every morning anew and make amends, to kneel down for the beauty and not only to not turn away from our, from the suffering, but also to not turn away from the dreams of our inner children and the outer ones.
Monica, thank you. So I'd like to invite us um to uh drop into a practice. As I uh was quoting the work of Joe Henrich and um his very clear uh view that um the community is really the vehicle for transformation, for cultural and social transformation. And this practice is a way for us to explore um how we can end our, our sense of loneliness. And um to discover that we are not separate from any being or anything. And it also is a path uh for us to see that compassion um is a spontaneous response that arises from this discovery of interconnectedness. And we know from um the Buddhist perspective that it is that sense of separateness, this separate self-identity, this is where our suffering really begins. And the realization that we are not separate from any being or thing is where our suffering ends. So I'm going to invite us uh to begin by um being settled in our chair or our cushion. And to be comfortable. And if you wish to close your eyes or not. And for a moment, um just bring your attention to the sensations in your body. The beating of your heart. The movement of your breath in and out of your body. And that breath deep in the body. And bring to mind someone who's really struggling. Someone whom you feel connected to. And whom you wish to be free of that struggle, of that suffering. And let that sense of connection and care strengthen your aspiration to serve. And breathe deep into the belly. And experience fully how this feels in your body. And consider how the very air that you are breathing now supports your life. Just as you wish to support the well-being of your suffering friend. And consider that we're not separate from the very air that we breathe. Nor from our friend. And I invite you to extend this insight. I mean, we can't exist without the fruits of this earth. Without the supportive family of, of friends, of others. We can't live without the sun. Or the wind or the rain. And we're, we're part of all life. The earth. The stars. The planets. We're part of the past and also the future. And I invite you to look at your hand. It, it reflects the countless generations of your ancestors. And back through our evolutionary passes, Joanna Macy shared with us a fin. It itself is earth, water, fire, air and space. And let yourself breathe deep into your belly. Connecting to who you and what you really are. And then let yourself now return to this intention to bring an end to this illusion of separateness that has fed so much suffering in our world. See how deeply connected we all are. And I ask you, as we conclude this practice, recall the elements of this practice and bring them into your life. Including this wonderful reminder. That we're not separate from any being or from anything. And remind yourself throughout your day to bring the spirit of this practice into your everyday life in order to benefit others and also to benefit yourself. So thank you. Thank you for your practice. So I, I want to uh to finish um our time together with uh a poem that I perish by Anna Akmatova. Um, it is called "Everything is plundered." Everything is plundered, betrayed, sold. Death's great black wing scrapes the air. Misery gnaws to the bone. Why then do we not despair? By day, from the surrounding woods, cherries blow summer into town. At night, the deep transparent skies glitter with new galaxies. And the miraculous come so close to the ruined, dirty houses. Something not known to anyone at all. But wild in our breast for centuries. So when we speak about cultural bequests, I am hoping that the legacy that is captured in the spirit of this poem that we can leave this for our future. Wild in our breast for centuries. So thank you for joining me today on the eve of uh this Hiroshima Day memorial time. Um, where we vow to end violence in our lives and in the world. Thank you. And I want to acknowledge Wendy, Stephanie, Joanna, Macy and John Paul Lederach, setting the field. And that we will come together with Corinne and Kozan and return to this collective mind that arises out of the experience of community that Joan Hen- Joe Henrich is so articulate about. So thank you.